Great.
Uh, I believe so.
What's three? I only have two. I got West Chester Street and Westford.
Yeah, I'm gonna email from last week about six ten Street asking for a continuance.
Oh.
So that was why I wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, yeah.
Um, for the purposes of moving this along.
Yeah, do we have, um, do we have any consuls representing the same petition tonight?
Attorney Gary's on the line with, uh, Mr. Pham, um, we got Wentworth Ave. Uh, and that's the only petition I have tonight.
Okay, so councilor, I'm just gonna, I'm just.
I'm sorry, just represent, uh, I represent Fatima Jader for one seventy-three Westford Street.
Okay, great.
Yeah, your request for a continuance, correct, sir?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So Council Gary, I'm gonna just take the continuance is out of order to, um, expedite the meeting and then come right into your petition and get to the national championship.
Sounds good. More fun things, right?
Efficiency and time is always a good thing.
Sure is.
You know, I did get a phone call from, uh, Mr. Briere. If he's not signed in at this point, he won't be joining us. He had an emergency at work. He apologizes and hopes everyone understands, so, um. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Good evening, sir, I'm here.
Good evening, how are you?
And, uh.
Um.
Mr. Prokop and Mr. Georgia is here too.
Okay, great, so we're getting ready, we're under, we get underway, Mr. Clerk, you ready?
Oh, you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Cool, good evening, welcome to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals. Public hearing for January eleventh, twenty twenty, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The meeting will not occur in person. We have four options available to us. Uh, we have use of Zoom, hot phone, we are on LTC. And we're able to move forward in that line. Um, we also will use, uh, public hearing access for members of the public wishing to speak on behalf of petition. I'll need them to state their name and address for the record. Uh, as previously, uh, discussed with, uh, Consuls and petition, we are gonna take, uh, continued business out of order. And we're gonna go to ZB twenty twenty dash fifty-five, Varian for Fatima Jader. That's it at one seventy-three Westford Street, uh, under section five point one, the applicant has requested a continuance to February eighth, twenty twenty ZBA meeting. Is there a counselor on record? Good evening, sir.
Hello. Yes, my client, uh, is requesting a continuance. Uh, she just needed more time to get her application fee in as well as to collect the data she needs just to get the notifications out. So with the holidays, um, just with her work schedule, just took a little bit of time to get that information together, uh, back in December. Uh, so we just respectfully request, uh, continuance for the February eighth meeting.
Okay, you'll be prepared at that point to go for a board vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, with that said, Mr. Clerk, may I have a motion?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty dash fifty-five, one seventy-three Westford Street to continue the public hearing in this matter to February eighth, twenty twenty.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Uh, Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approve continuance.
Member Peck?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to February eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to February eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Member Prokop?
Approve continuance, February eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Member Naroje?
Approve continuance to February eighth, twenty twenty-one.
So you've been continued. We, uh, look forward to hearing your petition on that evening. Happy New Year and thanks for signing in tonight.
We thank the board for their understanding.
Pleasure. Uh, also for the record tonight, alternate board, board voting member will be Mr. George Propel. We will move forward under continued business, ZB twenty twenty dash fifty-four for Varian. Joseph and Denise McHugh for twenty-four Winchester Street, section five point one. We are in receipt over the applicant, petition of requesting a continuance to January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a representative thereof?
I don't see anybody, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, none being heard. May I have a motion for continuance, Mr. Clerk?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty dash fifty-four for twenty-four West Chester Street to continue the public hearing through January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second, Mr. McCarty, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approve continuance.
Member Peck?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to January twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Member Prokop?
Approve continuance, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Member Naroje?
Approve continuance to January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Well, that, we can continue with that, Varian. It's moving forward under continued business. ZB twenty twenty dash fifty-six for Variances and Nelson Group at six ten Gorham Street. Uh, we're in, receive an email requesting a continuance. Um, Mr. Clerk, what was the continuance date?
Uh, looks like January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I believe, I believe the representative from six ten Gorham Street, looks like he's on the line, Mr. The Voice, correct?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Oh, good, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Uh, so we are requesting a continuance. We acquired a new engineer to revise our plans. Uh, we had anticipated having him ready to present last week, but I have not yet received them. So we do respectfully request continuance to allow us time to get the new plans to the board for their review of the plans and come up with any, I just want the board to be aware and see what the plans are to look at and before we request the Variances.
Well, thank you, sir, we appreciate that. Um, so we'll look forward to your new site plan and, and other documents you're gonna provide.
So we have new building plans and a new site plan. And I should have had one Saturday, I did not, so hopefully this week we'll have them and I'll forward, should I send them to someone other than Francesca? If she won't be back until now.
Uh, yes, I will put an email.
Person?
Yes, um, I will put an email in the chat. And you can send that and he will get it.
Perfect, I'll send it to you when I receive them.
Great, thank you very much. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty dash fifty-six, the six ten Gorham Street to continue the public hearing in this matter to January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Have a second?
This is Van Peck, I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Vice Chairman Peck, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approve continuance.
Member Peck?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to January twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Member Prokop?
Approve continuance, uh, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Member Naroje?
Approve continuance to January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Very well, sir, we look forward to, um, hearing of your new, uh, documents and wish you a happy new year.
I'm here, thank you all very much.
Thank you. We reported under continued business, ZBA twenty twenty dash forty-two, Variances Don Pham at fifty Wentworth Avenue, section five point one. Don Pham is seeking variance approval to modify the existing lot lines of two parcels at fifty Wentworth Ave that have merged for the purpose of zoning and build a new single-family home on one of the parcels. Both lots are the suburban single-family SSF zoning district. The new home will require variance approval under section five point one for minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage. And the existing dwelling will require variance approval under section five point one for the front yard setback to exceed the maximum lot floor area ratio FAR and for any other relief required of Lowell's own ordinance. Good evening, Attorney Gary, happy new year and welcome back.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, happy new year, new year to all of you as well. For the record, my name is John Gary of the Law Offices of Gary and Gary LLP, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Mr. Don Pham, who I believe is with us tonight as well. Um, and as the chairman just summarized the application before, I don't think I need to elaborate on that any further except to say that we are seeking the Variances requested. So this application was first heard back in October of twenty twenty and then again on December fourteenth, twenty twenty. At the December meeting, the board requested additional information from the applicant. The applicant has provided some additional information. We've provided a grading plan which shows the post-construction elevations of Lot B one, which is the lot where the new home is gonna be constructed. The steps leading from both the front and back doors as well as the walkways for those entrances. The plan also shows the continuation of avarity plantings along the rear of Lot A one, which is the existing lot with the existing home on it and the carriage house. So the, uh, the abutter to the rear of the property has planted some avarity. And, uh, it's the, it's the applicant's intent to continue that planting right across the back of the lot line, uh, where the existing carriage house is now. Uh, the plan also shows, um, that the, that the, um, area where the carriage house is going to be backfilled, loomed and seeded. Um, we also have, um, updated architectural plans which show the, uh, the steps and walkways associated with both the front and back entrances. And finally, the applicant has retained O'Hara civil engineering at the request of the stormwater management team for the city. Uh, in order to satisfy the stormwater management team, that all runoff associated with Lot B one will be captured within, within that lot, so there won't be any impact to the abutting lots, to the immediately abutting lots. Uh, Mr. O'Hara has submitted his, uh, plan to Mike Stewart from the stormwater management team. It's my understanding, based on the emails that I have seen between Mike Stewart and Fran, that, uh, they have, uh, approved that plan, subject to finalizing it, um, so we would be happy if, if there's any approval tonight, we would be happy, of course, to make it conditional to finalizing the drainage plan and approve, and approval from the stormwater management team. So other than that, I'm, uh, happy to answer any questions that the board may have or the, or questions of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We do appreciate, um, your diligence on, on working with a DPD and wastewater and, uh, getting the appropriate documents and, you know, attaining, um, professional company to help with this petition and ensure the, uh, the impact of the neighborhood is minimized. And that being said, I'd like to open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor. In favor. In favor. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I will yield to Mr., uh, to the, to the clerk for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. I see, I do see people there, I'm not sure.
I would like to speak in opposition.
Okay, thank you, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Neil Desmond, I own the property at thirty-four Wentworth Avenue, which is two doors down from the subject property of fifty Wentworth Ave. I've owned my home there for almost thirty years and some of my neighbors have owned their properties there for fifty or sixty years or more. So we've been there for a long time and we're very familiar with that area. I'm opposed to granting the petitioner a variance and permission to install a building on a non-conforming lot. The petitioner's advocate advocated the last meeting, stated at the last meeting that other buildings in close proximity to fifty Wentworth Avenue were on smaller lots. And that may be true. These homes were built a hundred to a hundred and seven years ago. My home was built in eighteen eighty-five and I believe the building on fifty Wentworth Avenue was built in eighteen fifty. So you're talking Civil War era. So, yeah, the, the lots were a little bit smaller. Um, there were no cars, there were no buses, there was no traffic, there was no electricity. So these buildings were conforming to that lot at the time that they were built. Times change as do building requirements. The city requires a certain threshold for square feet, frontage, living area and all the other things that, that you know about. The petitioner's advocate at the last meeting also stated that home values would increase. Um, the value of a property, it does not mitigate the, the installation of a non-conforming building. And I think that was probably that person's opinion. If it wasn't, I'd like to see some type of objective evidence showing the increase in values of buildings around fifty Wentworth Ave. The petitioner stated that he wants to leave Andover. Well, those are personal motivations and have no bearing on this matter. What does matter is that the neighbors that live next to fifty Wentworth Ave do want, do not want this project to move forward. They have stated so and they, they, they have good reason and standing. The installation of a non-conforming building will most definitely change the look of the neighborhood. This has been done in other sections of Lowell where buildings were put on properties that were probably a little bit too small and it does detract from the neighborhood. When this is done, the neighborhood suffers death by a thousand cuts. And add a bill, adding a building fifty Wentworth Ave is one of those cuts. It will change both the look and the integrity of the neighborhood. I've been there for a long time and I'm very familiar with that building. The, um, it, in my opinion, it will be detrimental to my investment and my neighbor's investments. The petitioner took a risk when he purchased a property that may have, haven't had the ability to have an additional structure put in place. That was his risk, that, that's what he decided to do. He said that he was looking to move from one town to the next and just move into Lowell. Well, he has a house, there is a house on that property, moved into it. If that's not good enough and he needs to put another building on a property, on a section of the property that's not conforming, well, then he bought the wrong piece of property. Or he wants to put a building on that property and maybe sell it, I don't know what his motivation is. Remove, removing a carriage house is not a mitigating factor to allowing installation of a non-conforming structure and should carry no weight in the decision-making process of this matter. The city has guidelines and requirements and I'm asking that this board make decisions based upon those requirements. If you've got the square feet, put a building on that property, go ahead and do it. If it does not have this square feet, the frontage and other aspects, then don't do it. And I'm not asking that you deny the petitioner is something that he is entitled to. I'm asking that you deny this project so that the neighbors can keep something that we are entitled to and deserve. That's my personal opinion and I don't wanna see this project move forward for those reasons. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate your participation this evening. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Hi, Nicole Scaff.
Good evening.
Hi there, happy new year.
Happy, happy, your name and address for the record, please?
Nicole Scaff, sixteen Glenwood Street, um, my property is directly behind Lot B. Um, I'm, I've spoken, this is my third time speaking on this project. I wanna thank Mr. Desmond for being so eloquent. Um, I am very much opposed to the project for all of the reasons that Mr. Desmond did mention. Um, my family has been at sixteen Glenwood Street since nineteen seventy-five. Um, I, I just don't know what more I can say, actually. Um, I'm just fully opposed to this, it's just, it's again, it's taking a postage-sized piece of property and putting this grandiose home on it, it just doesn't make sense. Um, the home on, on Lot A is a home that is large enough for a family of six. Um, absolutely beautiful inside, I know the home very well. I just can't get my head around why somebody is gonna build such a large home on a small piece of property. Um, again, it's setting precedence. Um, the city has turned a blind eye to many projects, I think, and I think this is one of them. And I think it's going to actually harm the neighborhood. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any others wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, I'm Nancy Canny and I'm at sixty-four Wentworth Ave. Uh, I have spoken a few times prior. I'm just voicing my opinion again and I also, um, do not agree with this project. Um, just for what I have said in the past and then for the reasons that were discussed just now previously, so that's all I have to say on the matter, but thank you for hearing me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for signing in again tonight, ma'am. Any others wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Jessica Marros.
Good evening.
Hi, and I'm at, um, thirty-three Guild Street. Um, I brought up in the last meeting regarding, um, the demolition of the carriage house and the hill and what it's going to look like, um, to hold back, um, all the fill and, um, especially the drainwaters, flood that, that's worked on. Um, but I just wanna ensure that that hill is gonna, um, hold up. It is a good-sized hill and I know I'm not directly, um, behind, um, the property, but that lot of, um, watered. So just wanted to point that out, but thank you.
Thank you very much for signing in tonight. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That being said, that portion of public hearing is now closed. As previously, uh, done, resume meeting if, uh, for any petition this evening or any others, anyone is unable to sign in and does sign in during the course of this petition. Uh, that wants to speak in favor and opposition, but the board will allow that matter of courtesy due to this, uh, process of our meeting. Um, public hearing is now closed, I'd like to open up to the board, Van?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted, uh, Attorney Gary to, if he had any comments in regard to the, uh, to all the comments from the neighborhood, I want, I want, Mr. Gary, I want you to give the opportunity to answer any questions the abutters have.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. So whatever, I heard a lot, we've heard and answered a lot of what, uh, what the comments were, so I've heard traffic, cars, um, impact to the neighborhood. Any, any cars associated with these two properties will have off-street sufficient, more than sufficient off-street parking. So there'll be no increase to traffic or cars on-street parking as a result of, of these two lots. I would disagree with Mr. Desmond that the, um, that a new home on this lot will not increase surrounding property values. Just, you know, by virtue of logic, it would seem to me that if you, uh, demolish a, um, dilapidated carriage house and you replace it with a, with a brand-new single-family home with a value of probably at least six hundred thousand dollars, it would, it can only help abutting values. I don't see how it could detract, I don't see that this particular house, it's a, it's a beautifully designed house, I don't see how it could detract from the character of the neighborhood. Uh, it's, it's slightly undersized, the lot is slightly undersized, but, but there are many homes on the street that are much more undersized, uh, undersized lots than this particular lot. Um, as far as the zoning Board of Appeals and, and what they do, I mean, I, we know that the Board of Appeals grants these types of variance all the time, that's, that's the function of the zoning Board of Appeals. Well, yes, there are bylaws in place and, and from time to time, petitioners come before the board to request Variances from those bylaws and that's exactly what we're doing tonight. Um, and, and I know that, um, the, um, the abutter for thirty-three Guild Street had some concerns about the, the slope behind the carriage house, so that slope is essentially going to be the same. The carriage house is going to be demolished, the foundation will be held in place, backfilled and there'll actually be more green space there to absorb any runoff. Uh, but the, the slope will not change at all behind the carriage house. Um, so hopefully that answers questions, I'm, I'm happy to, to address any concerns that the board may have as well.
Well, I have, I have a concern, Mr. Gary.
Excuse me, sir, sir, excuse me.
Yes.
Uh, the public hearing is closed and, uh, Vice Chairman Peck, we're on to the board members now, so.
Well, I have, I have a comment to Mr. Gary, I mean, gave him an opportunity to speak twice, I'd like another opportunity to rebut what he said.
No, sir, that's not, uh, the public hearing is closed. Attorney Gary is representing the petitioner, answering questions through the board and at this particular time through the chair. Uh, the public hearing is closed at this point, so, uh, Mr. Van Peck, the call is yours.
Uh, tha- thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, and, and thank you, Mr. Gary, for your comments. I, I also wanna thank the, the neighbors and, and the abutters that came up tonight to speak, uh, you know, speak about this project, uh, you know, I know this is something that, uh, that people feel very passionate about this project. Uh, you know, in, in my, in my own opinion, I really think, uh, this, this petitioner and this project is a reasonable request. Uh, you know, what they're requesting, what they're trying to do. And I think in the long run, it's only gonna add to the neighborhood and, and to the city. Um, and, um, you know, th- those are my comments and those are my thoughts on it, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Uh, thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman, in the interest of fairness, I will let Mr., uh, I'm sorry, I forgot his name. Neil, uh, I forgot your last name, sir, I'll let you, uh, speak on what you were going to say in the instance of fairness to the board.
board. What's your part of it?
I mean, thank you. Mr. Gary is, he's a paid advocate. I don't know where he lives, I don't know if he lives in that neighborhood. If he does, maybe he doesn't. But we live there. I live two doors down, we're familiar with that area. When he states that the value of the property can only increase, that's a ma- that's his opinion, he's being paid to say those things. You know, has he had a certified appraiser say, by putting that, you know, small piece of land, putting a building on it, are you certain that will increase the value of my property? You don't know that because you're an attorney, you're not a certified appraiser. And as far as the traffic, that's a tight area of Wentworth Avenue. So from Andover Street to Mansour, the road is narrow. Once you get onto the other side of Mansour, the road opens up, there's plenty of room. The buses have a hard time getting by in the wintertime. It's directly in front of my house. So when you can say all these, you know, there's going to be off-street parking, yeah, there's going to be off-street parking for people who live there, but what about guests and visitors and service deliveries and- and FedEx and UPS and, you know, the letter carriers? It's going to even bottleneck that area more. But- but my point is, is it's not a conforming lot, and you're trying to put a- a building on a small lot. And I've looked at every time I drive by that house, I look at that land, and I say, this is not going to look right. If you look at other areas of the city where these homes were put on, parcels of land where they probably shouldn't have been, it does detract from the neighborhood. This is my- this is my investment, this is my house, this is where we all live. So I don't know where you all live, and, you know, this probably doesn't impact you like it's going to impact us. We're going to have to live with this on a daily basis. And Mr. Gary is just getting paid to do this. So...
Okay.
Okay, that's- okay, I'm going to- I'm going to- I'm going to retrieve my time, please.
I believe, Sean, I believe your intention was to allow Mr. Desmond to speak and answer the questions.
I'm- I'm going to retrieve my- I'm going to move on. I'll retrieve my time.
Yeah, we're moving on from the public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want, since Attorney Gary, that you wanted to rebut it along, I wanted to give him their time. So I will tell, I'll take, I'll retrieve my time at this point, and I appreciate the concerns of the neighbors, and completely understand it. But as to Mr. Gary's, to Attorney Gary's point, which is what I was going to possibly bring up, yes, there are guidelines, yes, there are zoning boards, there are rules of zoning. That's why we have a zoning board of appeals, because sometimes these things do not fit within that, and that's why we have a board. If every single project had to confine with this, there would be no need for a zoning board of appeal, because everything would have to. That being said, to your point, sir, I'm looking at this, I see that the petitioner has provided a breakdown of the neighborhood in which, with regards to the size of the lot, in which he indicates that of twenty-five, out of the twenty-five surrounding properties, that Wentworth, that fifty Wentworth Ave, seventeen of them are outside of zoning guidelines. So to your point, sir, I mean, that- that would mean that everybody is non-conforming, and therefore we must, I guess we have to reverse everything and go back. The reason we're here is because Mr. Pham, like you and all other neighbors, have made an investment in the- in the neighborhood. He's also entitled to do something with- with this property. In reviewing the plans, and what is being proposed, I see that the first lot, Lot A one, will completely conform with whatever zoning is. And the second one lot, excuse me, with a couple of exceptions on a minimum front yard and existing FAR, which are very, very nominal requests. Lot B one, which is where the proposed house is supposed to be, the relief being sought is minimum lot size. What is being, what is required is ten thousand. What's being provided is nine oh five nine, which is nine hundred and forty-one square feet, that's in what is required. And in looking at the breakdown from, that has been provided by Mr. Pham, by the petitioner, there are lot sizes that are well- well, low, below that. So that does not seem to be a very unreasonable request for a variance fund. I'm considering the fact that we have criteria that we're supposed to be going by, which includes special hardship, owing to the circumstances relating to the soil conditions shape, what topography of the land and structures, especially affecting the land and structures, but not affecting zoning district. I believe that special hardship has been met based on that. Relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Having an additional piece of, additional home on a lot adding only adds to the value, and I- I agree with Attorney Gary, I believe it's going to add to the val- include, increase the value of the surrounding neighborhood's properties. And it'll add to the value of the city with regards to an additional tax pay. And finally, the release, request is going to be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of zoning. I believe the intent of zoning in this instance, and the relief that's being requested, would not, would not be nullifying that. So again, I completely appreciate all of the neighbors' concerns in this. The relief that's being requested does not appear to be, appears to meet the criteria in my opinion, and I think that this would be a good project going forward, and with the public, and we'll go with that. I yield my time, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I appreciate, as always, your professional outlining of the zoning criteria. That being said, Dennis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask a couple of questions, but before I do, I- I agree with Sean, but in making the point about the lot size, we currently have an existing lot that's twenty-one thousand six hundred and sixty square feet. And the required lot area in this neighborhood, this zoning district, SSF, is ten thousand square feet. So doing the math, you could arrive at two lots that would be in excess of ten thousand square feet and meet the criteria for setback and- and FAR. If you tore down everything there and started over, and the only criteria that you wouldn't meet would be roughly a ten-foot variance required for fronted, that would be, that would be it. If you tore everything down, started over, the only hurdle you'd have that you have to get relief from would be ten feet fronted. I like the idea of preserving the history of Lowell. I like the idea of preserving the existing house. I would not want to see that existing house torn down just to meet the- the lot area requirement. And preserving that house the way it's done here allows us to come really close with Lot B, where we're in striking distance, we're roughly ten, ten percent, we're nine thousand, over nine thousand square feet in the area. So I- I really feel that the preservation of that existing house is important, rather than tearing it down just to meet the ten thousand square foot lot size and minimum area, lot area for dwelling unit. I- I really think that we want to preserve that house, but I'm in favor of the plan in front of us for that reason. What's done in the back with the carriage house being removed, I think, really takes some of that density in the back especially away and improves the neighborhood, because it redistributes the density on the lot to the street side, where it creates a nice street elevation for the neighborhood. So I see a lot of pluses here. That being said, there's a plan that was presented for drainage that shows proposed infiltration trenches. It's a bit of a sketch. That was done, I think it's something that Mr. O'Hara worked on and maybe is working through with Mr. Stewart.
That's correct, Mr. McCarthy.
So that list drainage has proposed forty by four foot by two foot plus or minus infiltration trenches. But it locates the two proposed pear trees on the street side right over those trenches, that trench. And the grading on the site doesn't appear to support a trench unless the trench is a subsurface infiltration trench. So I- I would like a couple of changes made here, and that would be to propose the pear trees to be located outside of the infiltration trench by roughly, you know, three or four feet. Maybe they step back or step forward, but they are outside the infiltration trench, or infiltration trench moves. And then the infiltration trench, since it's not proposed grade, are not indicating a trench, must be therefore a subsurface infiltration system. Is that correct?
I believe it is, Mr. McCarthy. They're- they're working on this as we speak, though. This has not been finalized yet, but Mr. Stewart from the wastewater has indicated in his email that he- he, they agree with the concept, they just need to tweak it a little bit. So that, you know, we're happy to accommodate.
Can we make a condition that the infiltration trench will be subsurface and the pear trees will be located outside of the infiltration trench?
We certainly don't have a problem with that, as long as the- the engineers can figure that out.
I'm sure the infiltration trench would be more successful to be subsurface, so you're not looking at an exposed riprap or gravel trench in front of the house.
That makes sense.
I think that the intent is for it to be subsurface, but I just want to make sure that we condition that, so we don't end up with a surprise when we go out there and see the- the swale, gravel swale, if you will, in front of the property.
We're happy to accept that as a condition.
Okay. I think that the improvements that have been made with the information that we now have in front of us, the removal of that carriage house in the back, I- I really think that this is a successful project, and I agree with my fellow board member, Sean Callahan, that I think that this does meet the criteria for the granting of a variance, so I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. George?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also have to agree with Sean. It looks like Mr. Pham, you know, have met the guidelines. I- I know the neighbors are concerned, I mean, there is strong opposition, but if we have to, if we have to make a decision, you know, based on this, we have to go by what's, you know, what's in the laws, what's in the guidelines. But I- I do understand, you know, the concern that how the neighborhood would be changed and- and be affected. But I also have to agree that, you know, this change would and could potentially, you know, raise the value of the street, just based on the fact that- that- that he's, Mr. Pham is making improvements. But it's- it's, it would be difficult, I- I guess, to- to see that at this time, but the hope is that Mr. Pham followed the guidelines based on what he's submitted, and- and maybe in the end, you know, the neighbors would see that, you know, hopefully it- it does benefit the neighborhood. But at this point, I- I would have to go based on the guidelines that I- I think he's met the criteria. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, George.
Um, Mr. Chairman, looking at the numbers, the relief being sought by the petitioner, you know, we've got ten percent, you know, nine hundred and forty-one square feet out of ten thousand, that's, you know, around ten percent, and only eleven feet out of, out of ninety feet. I think, you know, that's also around ten percent, thirteen percent. And based on the fact that, as Member Callahan says, we've got other properties there, other lots there that, you know, do not totally conform, and, you know, they exist in, they under use, I think, I think it would be unfair not to grant the property. The relief is six. And, you know, as- as Member McCarthy says, the combined lot, if you combine lot A and B, it probably meets the zoning guidelines, so I think the- the neighbor should consider that, you know, when they, when they look at this petition. So I'm inclined to approve this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. I'd like to take the opportunity now to thank the petitioner. I want to thank the neighbors, you know, the purpose of public hearing, the purpose of the zoning board is to have open conversation relevant to the topic, to the petition. Clerk Callahan outlined it very professionally. I think the reason we're on our third continuance is because, at first glance, it appears to be a lot ask, but as you break it down, and as you look, that variance is set throughout the city, that both the petitioner and Attorney Gary did their due diligence, working with the city. Understanding what Mr. McCarthy was referring to as demolition of an existing home that does have a value both to the street and to the history of the street, so having that structure remain is in character line with the neighborhood. I mean, I appreciate all neighbors and- and the public participating in the process, I myself participating in the process as a board member, but I also live in the neighborhood, and I'm very familiar, I've been here over fifty years, with this neighborhood and the characteristic of it and the values of it as an investment. That's the reason why everybody purchases a home is for its investment. The city is growing, people are seeking opportunities to raising their families, have a financial gain for a future business plan. It's all real estate, I understand that. The comments by- by the city have all been looked at, they've been addressed. We have, we're looking at one condition already, AccuWest, Attorney Gary, as it relates to Mr. McCarthy's concerns, so I think the key here for me is several, several things, is the ability to understand the importance of zoning first and foremost, but what the board has a role and obligation to do. And in some cases, the decisions in a detriment would be in the complete opposite of what the zoning is intended to do, and that is to allow variance approvals as set out in the bylaws according to the application process and prevent, present the evidence. Attorney Gary is very familiar with the process of zoning. He's come before this board on several occasions. He does his homework, he's due diligence, he's professional, and he represents not only this petition, but other petitioners in the past in a professional manner, manner, and in an overall manner, what's in the best for his client, what's in the best interest of the- of the city, the tax bill, as well as the neighbors. And I'm sure he can attest to that as well. I am moving forward with an approval for this. Several things changed over the course. Increase in storm water, slope, as well as the removal of the structure. We sure know habitation would take place. We're all done in good faith and that's the purpose of the board. The purpose of the public hearing is to set forth a professional bearing on the materials that enhance. So Counselor Gary, the one, uh, condition set forth, if Mr. McCarthy could briefly, uh, go over that. If you approve of that, we can have the clerk place it in the formal motion and move to a vote.
One more, Mr. Chairman. I, I just checked my notes from, uh, last, the last meeting. Uh, Attorney Gary, I think we were discussing, uh, uh, a condition that the garage on lot B two will not be used as a residential dwelling because it is, uh, it is a very large structure that we just want to sort of, does not.
Of course. We, we are, uh, petitioners in agreement with both of those conditions.
We got that. Dennis wants to clarify what his condition was again.
Um, absolutely. Um, but it is what, that garage though, I think is the one that's demolished. Isn't that right?
The carriage house is being demolished, the garage is staying. The, the carriage house at one point was occupied, the garage never was. It's, it's just a garage with a loft. Um, you know, it doesn't have any, any infrastructure in it that would allow any type of occupancy, it would be against zoning. We're happy to include the condition. I don't think it's possible, but, but we're happy to include the condition.
Okay, good enough.
I, I, yeah, I think I just wanted, I, I remember that being concerned at the last meeting
Right.
from the neighbors. And I just want to make sure that we're clear. Uh, so there's not, not just your client that's down, that's down the line if the other sells the property to someone else.
Understood.
So, um, Sean, um, the, uh, condition that I was looking for is that the infiltration trenches be subsurface and that pear trees locate, be located, pear trees, uh, new pear trees be located outside of the infiltration trenches.
Okay. Uh, would, would that encompass being finalizing the drainage plan with stormwater as Attorney Gary previously proposed? I mean, would that be, would that be included with that?
So right now the infiltration trenches are listed though, not as subsurface. So I just need to have that. And then the, the pear trees obviously need to be relocated, I think.
All right. So, so, so there'll be three, there'll be three conditions, Attorney Gary. One was you previously mentioned finalizing the drainage plan with the stormwater management team.
Yes.
Number two would be, uh, Dennis' condition of, uh, the infiltration, uh, system will be subsurface and the pear trees should be relocated outside of that infiltration, uh, system. And then three is the garage should not be used for any residential dwelling.
Thank you. All, all are acceptable.
Christine, did you get those?
I did. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
When you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments by the board, members of the board, comments, concerns, additions, uh, to conditions? None being heard. May I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty dash forty-two for fifty went worth now for variance approval under section five point one for lot B one for minimum lot size, minimum land area for dwelling, minimum frontage. If the lot A one for minimum front yard setback and minimum FAR to modify existing lot lines of two parcels that have merged for the purposes of zoning and build a new single-family residential building on lot B one with the previously mentioned condition.
I have a second.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Uh, Chairman Perrin?
Approve with conditions.
Member Peck?
Approve with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Pocop?
Approve with conditions.
Member Naroje?
Approve with conditions.
Attorney Gary, your, your client has been unanimously approved with conditions. We wish you the best of luck on the project. Any comments or concerns?
No, thank you all for, uh, for your due diligence and listening.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Moving forward under new business, we have none. Moving forward under other business, we have a variance extension at one twenty-two six feet. The applicant is seeking a one-year extension to a variance that expired on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. There's a representative for the petitioner here.
Uh, sir, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay. My name is Jagmohan Chani. I'm looking for one year more extension, um, for this project to continue.
You state in the address for the record, please, sir?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we just need to, your full name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Jagmohan Singh Chani, three Judy Street, Rikka Mass. And the project is at one twenty-two, Sixth Street, Lowell Mass.
Okay. Can you give us a, a quick overview of why you're seeking the extension?
Um, when I got the approval, I was under this impression that I have enough time to, uh, apply for the permits and all that. But I had a, a studio was occupied by the tenant, so I had to work with them to give them enough time to look for their place. And, um, but they were not able to find it because of their budget issues. So I had to work with them because I didn't want them to be homeless. Um, and with that, I, I missed the whole one-year period. And then due to the pandemic, uh, we could not do a lot of things and everything was shut down. And, um, now I'm looking for, forward, um, to continue this project and, um, convert that unit.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
When I filed for the permit, that's where I found out that I need a variance because I ran out of the time.
Very well. We, I appreciate that and we certainly understand, uh, I certainly understand, um, those issues you came up against.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Clerk, we need to open for an experience, extension to public hearing?
Uh, I'll, yes, I was gonna say I'll, I'll, I'll have Christine.
It's, it's up to you, Chairman Perrin, if anyone's on the call. But no, it's not required.
Okay. That being said, I'd like to.
I don't know. There's, there's, there's Bob Lee on, on the line. I don't know what he's here for.
All right. This is, uh, just listening in, sitting in from, uh, the, the very first continuance that was addressed earlier. He's just still sitting on the meeting. I apologize.
Okay. No problems. Just didn't know if you were part of the public and wanted to address this, this petition. Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, that being said, I'd like to open up for the board, Sean.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this seems pretty straightforward, uh, as far as the, uh, the relief is being requested. Uh, usually when we're looking for extensions and it's not, uh, in a prior, uh, variance or special permits granted with some form of conditions, I just want to double check and make sure and see what the status of those are. Uh, Mr. Chani, uh, so, uh, I'm going to presume that it's because your tenant, uh, you know, that because of the situations with your tenant, uh, and, you know, with the pandemic and everything, uh, maybe I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that maybe you haven't had a chance to comply with, uh, whatever's. I mean, it says basically it was, we're looking for, uh, you must, uh, the facade must incorporate double hung windows inside incompatible with the second floor. But, uh, I, I just want to get, what's the status on that? I mean, I'm, I'm gonna guess we kind of been able to do that, right?
Well, I have prepared the architect drawings and submitted for, you know, for the approval by, uh, you know, the building department to give me approval. So then we can start the project. It will be, you know, um, in those guidelines. It will work.
No, I understand. I just, uh, when, when they ask for extensions, I think this, this is an opportunity to find out where we're standing with regards to conditions that have already been, that have been, were granted with a variance. It doesn't make sense for us to grant an extension if those conditions can't be met or haven't been met. Um, but I'm, under the circumstances, I can understand why they haven't been met at this point. And I presume that, you know, I just wanted to get a status on.
Right.
Where, where we're at on that. I, I, I'm, I'm confident you're gonna get it done. I just want to.
Right, yeah.
Uh, with that, I mean, I had nothing else, Mr. Chairman. I would take the, it seemed warranted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. George?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I mean, I would just imagine under these extraordinary circumstances that, um, um, you know, you would need to make these changes so that you can, uh, you know, make the appropriate submissions, you know, when, when the time is right. So, um, I, I don't have any, any issues at this time.
Great. Thank you, George. Robert?
Chairman, it seems, uh, the petitioner's, uh, extension is due to circumstances beyond his control. So I have no objection to, uh, granting him the extension.
Thank you, Robert. Van?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman. Just like my colleagues, I, I have no issues with Van's extension. I, I do want to ask the petitioner, um, for the, the extension you're asking for is one year. So, so you have four months, four months away to finish the project, which is a, a little, a little bit of time. But you think you can beat that within the, the year time extension on the twenty-fourth of twenty twenty?
Well, I think the, the extension, I, I understood, uh, with, from the previous, uh, conversation with the, the zoning board, uh, now the members, that when I pull the permit, that's where I have it, one year to finish the project. Um, I still don't know a lot of things that, you know, whether city is gonna allow to do things or not when I pull the permit and they will approve the permit. And they might put a restriction to it. So I don't know how long it's gonna take to finish it.
Okay. Well, like, like I said, Mr. Chairman, I have no issues with this. I just want, I don't want to go, like, go to approve an extension and then, and then the petitioner comes back, uh, another six months or a year. But, um, you know, those are just my thoughts. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Dennis?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman. I think we should absolutely support this. I know I can. Um, the petitioner has lost rent for the commercial unit and has lost rent for, I'm not sure how many years, but has lost rent for the studio apartment due to the situation. Um, I, I really feel that the least we can do is give him an extension on the variance to help with this situation because he does a nice job of maintaining this property. And adding a three-bedroom unit in that neighborhood, I think is totally needed. So, um, I, and, you know, uh, Christine, if, if the variance is granted for a one-year extension and it takes, uh, even longer to get to the courts not knowing how the COVID, uh, piece is gonna enter into this for the eviction, but, um, is the variance, um, required to be, um, in place upon occupancy permit or just the building permit?
Uh, variances and special permits are enacted when substantial construction has taken place. Um, in my previous tenure, that typically meant at least the foundation as a minimum was in, and we considered that substantial. Um, so I think in this case, as long as he's started work within a year, he should be fine.
Yeah. I think you're right. Okay. Well, um, that's, that's, I, I really feel sorry about, uh, the situation that you're in. And I think just because of this, uh, special situation that we have, who knows, for the next three, four, six months, hopefully nothing more than that, you should be fine. So I, I look forward to seeing this variance, um, extended. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. I mean, certainly we understand, um, the situation you're in, needing to come in, uh, for an extension. You're, you're in, you're in the business of, uh, you know, with your property business of enhancing the properties in the city and, um, renting to, uh, members of the community. So in, in light of the situation that we're in, uh, I, I think the various notion is, is appropriate in this case. Um, that being said, may I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe, uh, Mr. Gorge had a, uh, voices of his.
Oh, I'm sorry. George?
George spoke and Robert, I don't believe Robert, uh, correct, right, George?
Robert?
Yeah, I spoke.
I did, Robert.
Yeah, I thought I.
All right. I, I'm sorry. Maybe I wasn't.
We all have, actually.
I must have dozed off.
We've all spoken.
Oh, 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 Mr. gentleman. Mr. Beck's feet.
Well done. Well done, boys. Uh, may I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Okay. Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, uh, for one twenty-two Sixth Street, uh, for an extension, actually, I have a zone, I think, I have the number here. For ZB two thousand nineteen dash nine, one twenty-two Sixth Street, uh, to extend, uh, previously granted variance for one year.
I have a second.
I second. George.
Seconded by Judge. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approve the extension.
Member Peck?
Uh, approve the extension.
Member Callahan?
Approve extension for one year.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the extension for one year.
Member Pocop?
Approve the extension for one year.
Member Naroje?
One-year extension.
Also, we wish you the best of luck in, um, in, in the future with your project and hopefully you'll get underway soon.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for the vote. Yeah, thank you.
Pleasure. Moving forward under other business, we have minutes for approval from December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, have the members been able to review? If so, any comments, concerns, additions, deletions?
None here.
None being, none being heard. May I have a motion to accept?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
I have a second.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'll pick the motion.
Seconded by Dennis McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve, uh, minutes from December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Member Peck?
Uh, approve the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Approve minutes for December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the meeting minutes.
Member Pocop?
Approve the minutes for December fourteen, twenty twenty.
Member Naroje?
Minutes, um, minutes for December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Very well. Um, under other business, we have the announcement of a new employee with us. Uh, Christine, would you like to share the good news with the citizens of our great city?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Chairman Perrin. I'm excited to introduce, ooh, excuse me, uh, excited to introduce Jessica Wilson, um, to the team. She's the new associate planner. Uh, she has, um, extensive experience in urban planning and urban design, uh, at Harriman and Associates. Uh, and today is her first official day. So, welcome, Jessica.
Wel, welcome aboard, Jess. We wish you, uh, great success in your long endeavor and career.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.
Same here.
You're learning from, and you're learning from the ball. You're, you have extensive experience, but you're learning, you're learning from the best.
You are.
Yes.
Absolutely.
You are, for sure. Okay. That welcoming is said. Anyone wish any, any board members, any open comments or concerns?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I, I think, I don't know if this is time to bring it up, but, uh, I know there was conversations, uh, emails, uh, about specific projects and maybe something to discuss next week, next month. Uh, the friend is here, um, about, as, as member McCarthy's credit, I think something needs to be that discussed about these petitions that we've been granting continuances with, uh, where they're scrambling to get us the information before the next hearing date. And I, to member McCarthy's point, I think it's, I think it's something maybe we should discuss about setting some guidelines, if not deadlines, on having petitioners get the information that we talk, we tell them at the hearing, we really need to us with plenty of time for us to get a chance to review it. I'll let, I'll let member McCarthy speak on that because it wasn't, I thought it was a great idea on it, but maybe it's something we should be discussing.
Uh, sure, Sean. I, what, what I was hoping for is, um, that, uh, deadline of the Thursday prior to the hearing, that all documents that are gonna be available for us to review are submitted and uploaded. So that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, the day of the hearing, as a minimum. So that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, the day of the hearing, as a minimal, that that would be, I mean, if it's even more than Thursday, but I would say that the cliff for me would be at least Friday for us to review. A lot of us, you know, may be traveling on the weekend and might not have a weekend available to do that kind of thing. So at least because it's Friday as, as to dig into the last-minute documents that are being uploaded.
I will put that on the agenda for our discussion with Fran, um, because that's not always in her control, so I'll put that on for a future discussion.
Great.
Great, well, and, and I, I came to that point, um, uh, we, we can have the open discussion, but quite clearly, I, I agree with Dennis. Uh, having materials, um, Thursday at the latest, um, it's the obligation of the petitioner, it's in the, in the bylaws, it's in the application for required documents. Uh, outlined and, and checklisted, uh, DBD staff over the years has done a great job organizing it. If the office can be organized, the board can be organized, I certainly would expect petitioners to be organized. And if fans to the board, um, asking for time to review items, uh, isn't a big ask. And to have things submitted, uh, at a late hour, uh, and then you're subject to having to review them on a Sunday or a Monday prior to a meeting, um, it, it's not adequate time, so I, I agree, I, I look forward to the open discussion. And I also look forward to minimizing, um, continuances, um, and, you know, jamming up the gears of, of process, so those are my comments, any other comments or concerns?
I agree with you, and I, Mr. Chairman, well, we, 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 the last, I, 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 looking over the last few months, I've seen many, many, many continuances that we've granted because something is, maybe it's something we gotta stop by. But I, I'm looking forward to having, because having that conversation.
M, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could just comment just for a, a few minutes, um, I, I'll keep it brief, sir. You know, I, I, I do agree, uh, in terms of getting all documentation, at least that deadline of the Thursday before the meeting is actually pretty fair. Um, and not, not just fair to the board, but fair to the public. Um, you know, the information that we get and we review should also be accessible and be viewed, and can be viewed by the, the public if they're wondering about a petition. So I don't want to belabor the issues, we can talk about it more in the next meeting, but all this information that we get should be in a timely manner, and it should be available not just to us, but also to the public if they want to view it for whatever petition they, they're, they wonder about or want to talk about. Thank you, sir.
Great point, great point, Mr. Vice Chairman, public is, uh, why we're here. Any other comments for the board? None being said, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Popko, the meeting is adjourned, have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, congratulations, Jessica.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Welcome to team.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
All right, good night.
Night.